Good evening and welcome to the September 2023 meeting of the Penfield Library Board of Trustees. Thank you for joining us. This is a public meeting and is being broadcasted on Penfield Public Broadcast and is also available on YouTube after the meeting. Do I have a motion to adopt today's agenda?
Naraj?
I'll second.
All right, perfect. Our first item of this evening is to approve the last month's meeting minutes and the finance report. Do I have an adoption to approve the meeting minutes?
I will.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Perfect. Naraj, would you like to go over the?
I would. Thank you so much, Brett. So we're going to start with the August 2023 monthly budget summary. Yes, we are in September, but this is through August. That's eight months out of the year, or 66%. So that's the threshold that I look at. I dropped down to total expenses just to see how we're doing in total, and we're coming in 60%. So that's about 6% better, so great job. Our wages, the bulk of our expenses, that's right on budget. That's better by 2%, so I say that's flat. More controllable expenses, like materials, that's coming in at 53%. That's 13% better if we drill down. The large portion of the materials, the largest portion, is direct books. That's coming in at 11% better than budget. So I anticipate probably more buying in the latter of the next few months of books. Contractuals, 18% better. The biggest line item there is automation. That's coming in at 16%. So all in all, it's a good month. 66% of the year is done, so we're looking good going into the end of the year. The operating budget, that looks great. We're positive, and the gift and memorial fund is largely unchanged. But the one thing that I did want to point out to the board is that we do have two CDs coming up. I'd like some guidance, and I will give you my suggestion. One CD, it's a very small CD. It's $5,500 maturing October 29th. Second CD is a much larger CD, $32,000. That's November 12th. So understanding that these CDs aren't really staggered, I'd like to, instead of having two separate CDs like so close, I'd like to stagger them out a little bit more. So my suggestion is not to renew the smaller 5,500 CD. Let it go into the checking or the savings for the small time being, and wait till the other CD is going to be maturing at November 12th, and then combine those funds. So that's about $37,000. And then create one small CD, like half of it, $18,000, about six months out, and then the remaining $19,000, about 12 months out. We've been looking at, a lot of the focus in the past is about rates and everything. That's one thing that we should be looking at, but I think the larger focus, honestly, should be liquidity. And so instead of just having a blanket thing saying, hey, see what best rates we can get, I think if we stagger it like six and 12 months, then we're kind of hedging our interest rate. And we're not in the money of making money, but we're just hedging interest rate exposure and having one short-term maturing. Let's say if we do have expenses that we need to use, then we can use it. So that's my suggestion, not to renew the first CD. Wait till the second CD matures, combine it, and then split half between six months and another half a little bit later, 12 months. Can we get some guidance or some opinion on this?
Sounds great to me.
I know, last meeting, Rhonda and the board discussed possibly spending down the gift and memorial fund quite a bit. Just that we're carrying out large balance, and the town is able to essentially take those funds.
Yeah. And so, and I understand that. The part of it, this is only the CD portion. Our gift and memorial, our money builders, which is like a savings account, has a significant dollar amount. So I don't think we need to, I understand saving, I mean, spending down. We have $37,000 in the savings. We have $20,000 or $15,000 in the checking. So I don't think we're going to be cash strapped for, like, spending right now. And so that gives us the ability to spend responsibly. But then what do we do with the $37,000? We're not going to keep it in the checking or the savings. I think we have that. It's not a huge amount, but, and we have more money in the Canadago National, too. But I'm just saying, these are CDs that are coming due.
And the obligations that we have were for the shares, if I'm not mistaken, and then...
And the tables.
Yeah, sorry. Which we also voted on an amount of...
Fifty, was it? Trying to think.
Was it in the minutes, actually?
I thought it was fifty. We raised it.
Should be in the minutes.
We wanted better quality chairs.
We took a vote for chairs and tables to be allowed to spend up to $40,000.
And when would those be due?
Well, right now, the construction has started in the room. The carpet has been picked out, the wall color has been picked out, the kitchen cabinets and the countertop all picked out, but nothing has been installed. We've seen now six chair sales. We haven't really found one we love. I'm planning to go to a salesperson either this week or next week to see some more chairs. I kind of would like to have the room colors set so I can see what it actually looks like before I pick the chairs, but I would like to buy them by the end of 2023.
So in that case, that's a great input. So we have 37,000. I don't want to drain it down to nothing. So in that case, why don't we just not renew both of the CDs? And then we have our Canadago still there as a CD. That way, we're not having to pull a CD in case there's overage or something. And then after this capital, because right now, we don't generally spend that much money, but that way we understand at the, like, after the construction project is done, and then we'll know for certain how much money we can keep, and then we'll maybe revisit to get a CD at that point. What do you think? That way, we're not in a jam. That's the only thing that, and we're not missing a lot in interest rates, like, for, and again, this is like for four months or whatever like that, like, wait till the construction project ends and then go back into CD.
I think that's a good idea, Naraj. And I think that also, I like your idea of taking it and putting it into two that are six months apart, because then I think that if something comes up, then we have that. It's not all in, all in one basket, kind of.
Yep.
So we want to, as the CDs mature, keep them in the cash?
Yes. Let's just, right now, I'd like the guidance from you guys to say, don't renew it, and we'll, don't renew either CDs, just put it into money builders, just put it into the savings account. That way, it's available. And then after the construction is done, the renovations, then we'll talk as a board to, like, probably stagger, but it'll depend on how much money is left.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the finance report and to approve having the CDs mature and have them going to?
I think it would be two separate votes.
Okay.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve when the CDs mature to have them go to cash?
I make that motion.
Justin, second.
So it'd say something like the two current CDs with Canadago?
Okay. So, yeah, so the two CDs with Family First.
Family First.
So one CD matures 10/29. The second CD matures 11/12. And I'd like both of them not to renew.
Right.
And it's, Justin?
So a motion to not renew the specific two, in your language?
In Family First.
In Family First.
All in favor?
I'm sorry, who seconded it?
I'll second.
Okay, perfect.
And then we need one for the financial?
Yes. And then do I have a motion to approve the financial report?
I'll do it.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Perfect. Do we have, I'm looking, do we have any public participation tonight? No? Okay. We'll go on to the next item here, liaison report. Linda from the town?
Well, the town board had the tentative budget presented to us at the last legislative meeting, and the public hearing will be on October 4th. And then see what everybody has to say, any input. Still flexible as it stands. You know, we're ending the summer series of events. Taste in the Blues is this Saturday, Chili Cook Off, you know, at the Apple Theater, and that's it. That's the end of the summer for all the summer series. We were going to vote on the comp plan. We had to have another public hearing because there were so many changes made to it, so that's, that's coming up pretty soon. We've got a DPW, and we're creating a new facility, updating the facility. There's going to be an open house on it October 14th, I believe it's the date. If you want to come and see what the changes are going to be, and kids can come climb on the trucks. It's going to be like a family thing for everyone. And that's about it, I think. Anybody have any questions?
Any hot topics from the budget thing that feels going to cause?
Hot topics? Not really. I mean, you know, if you think about hot topics, we still have people coming about pickleball. And that, actually, is in our, part of our ARPA money we have going towards the pickleball courts at Shadow Pines, as well as money that Senator Brew could put aside for that. But just going around and around with different pickleball players' input about what they'd like to see, you know. I think that's moving forward now, though. I think we have a compromise.
All right. Does anyone else have any questions?
So we are not building a new DPW?
Well, it's...
Or they're just renovating what we have?
No, no. It really is new, because the one we have is in the 1950s. It's across the street on Jackson Road.
Okay, still the same place.
Yeah. It's really worn.
Yeah, it is. I mean, that's why I thought we were building a new facility.
No, well, we are, yes, but there's, it's a complex, you know? And we do have some, there has been some new things put in over the years, you know? Not everything's going to be razed, but the main focus is the DPW facility headquarters is going to be redone, rebuilt.
Okay.
We've been talking about it for quite a while, and, yeah, so we're, I don't know, probably next year it'll be, I hope, the shovel in the ground.
That would be great.
Well, Linda, thank you so much for sharing that information. With that, we'll go on to the next item of topic here, which is the Friends of the Public Library.
Oh, the Friends of the Public Library have a lot to say.
All right.
They have had the best library sales since 2018.
Wow.
So they were, you know, very excited. They're also putting on the calendar a mini sale, a mini book sale in April, and they're thinking through some new ideas for, you know, in library book sales. Do you have, I mean, I don't know if you know anything about, no?
We don't have any additional space to give them, so I'm not sure what they're thinking.
All right. So usually, the library sales bring in 25 to 34, $30,000. And this year, the sale brought in over $34,000 for programming.
Nice.
So they're, you know, they're picking up. They really think that social media has been the top driver for getting people to join up as far as book sales. And they're adding, they're going to add another social media campaign, and the website has helped. They also had a membership drive in person in the library in February. So they've, they've brought about 25 new members, I think.
Wow.
Yeah, which is amazing for the Friends. But, you know, they're looking for questions and suggestions from us, so be thinking of, you know, what else do you think the Friends can, or what we can offer, you know, the Friends? Brett came up with a good idea the last time, where, you know, the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts have bottle drives, and so maybe to help support the library getting books, the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts can do the same thing, and, you know, you can put a bag of books at the bottom of your driveway for them to come by on a Saturday or whatever and pick them up.
That's an amazing idea.
Yeah, it was. I thought it was a great idea, so. So Shelley and Sue Lyons work together, and they are doing, you know, they're coming around with some really good ideas for opening up opportunities for the Friends. And so, but they really do want to, they do appreciate and want to extend their appreciation to the library staff for helping them out the day of the, the week of the sale. Jason and I worked on Sunday organizing books, tons. They were short of books at one, at one point, and now they had more books that they, you know, that they knew what to do, knew what to do with. So, yeah, they were very excited.
Nice.
Worked out really well, so.
Love hearing that.
That's it, from me.
Does anyone have any questions for Judy? No? No worries. All right, we'll go on to the different, different committee reports here. The finance report we went over. And anything in the personnel department that we need to go over?
Yeah, so Rhonda sent me an email. We're hiring three new pages. I believe we had some go off to college, so we needed to replace them. I'm going to try my best with names. Abdallah is a high school student who's going to work weekends. Nicolette is going to do three shifts per week, not exceeding 14 and a half hours. And Nancy is also going to be on the same schedule, so motion to approve these three new pages.
Jennifer, second. Naraj, all in favor?
Thank you.
You're welcome. With that, Jennifer, anything in the strategic planning?
No, not at the same.
Okay. Justin, looks like we have a few there for the bylaws and policies.
Just a couple, really. So we are doing the review of the policies. They've been, they've previously been mandated to do every three years. Rhonda and I spoke last meeting about doing a more staggered approach to the reviews, just because some of the policies don't need to be reviewed as often, like every three years. And of course, we can always make policy changes as needed and as they come up. So if you look in some of the forwards that they were, that have been sent to you, it's just the first item, the Policy Form Statement and Procedure Review Schedule Draft, if you want to look at that. And if you have any thoughts and opinions on adopting this new review schedule, essentially? Just to get, just to space it out a little bit more, so we're not spending, you know, four months in meetings every three years to review policy.
I like the idea of staggering them.
Who determines how, what the staggering schedule is? Three or five or four?
So we went over, Rhonda and I went over it last, after the last meeting, just, and we went line by line to determine just which policies would need reviewing more frequently and less frequently, just as things come up and things change. So it's really, it's just a board decision. It's a, we make, we get to make that decision, and we can change this policy as we see fit if, going forward, it's not working out. But once again, if there is an issue with a policy, we also have the ability to change that when it comes up.
Yeah. So it's not like we can't review something off schedule.
Yeah, right. We can review it whenever we want. This just creates the requirement to review it periodically, and instead of doing it once every three years, all at once, we stagger it.
Yeah. There's a few of them on here without a review date.
Because we're doing them either today or next month.
Perfect, just wanted to make sure. Okay.
But we're not voting yet, you know, based on what we did last year? We, the committee worked, brought everything to the next meeting, which is this one, and then the members should look at this, think about it, because this is big, you know, policy is important. Think about it over the month, and then we'll vote next month. And if in the interim, anybody has ideas or suggestions or questions or concerns, you know, email everybody, and we can make changes, and then bring it to a vote in October.
So you really don't want input right now?
No, input's, that was fantastic, yes. I just say, we, in the past, this board has said that they didn't want to vote on policy quickly. They wanted to take their time.
Correct. But if we have questions or...
Yeah, absolutely.
...clarifications, we can talk about it.
Absolutely. That's what this time is for, to discuss.
Is this a new policy, unattended child policy?
No.
We've had that one?
No.
Have we had issues with unattended children?
Every public library has issues periodically.
Oh, all right. Just curious, because I haven't noticed it happening before.
Because we have a policy about it.
That's right.
I remember last time we reviewed this policy.
I was just wondering if, you know, somebody dropped off their child at 10 o'clock in the morning and then came and picked them up at 3:00 or something.
As long as they're over the, over the age of 10, they can, right?
Yeah.
Technically.
How do you know that rule?
I tried to make it down to four, they just wouldn't go. Yeah, no, perfect. Well, I appreciate this. Anyone have any questions or additional input that we need to address today, or can we wait until next month?
Well, I have some questions about the new trustee search policy. I'm not, I'm not aware what the old one looks like. I couldn't find it in my folder of, of things, but I can, you know, I can email everybody, and that's fine.
Well, I can tell you that the only thing we changed from the old policy was removing paragraph two, which is procedure. So we took paragraph two, which was, "In conducting a search for new trustees, the Board of Trustees will form a new trustee search team consisting of the town liaison and three current trustees," so on and so on. That paragraph is procedure, that's not policy. That's just saying the steps that the board will take to find a new trustee.
Okay.
So what's important when you're writing policies is that you don't put in procedure, because procedure is very fluid, it can change. But policy has to come to the board for a vote, so it's important to separate the two. We took that paragraph out of policy, put it down lower in procedure, but no other language was changed, right, Justin?
No, no other language changed. We just wanted to separate policy and procedure.
Well, then I'm looking at October. I mean, I'm just looking at October, and I have been on a Board of Trust, or I've been on a trustee search team before, a couple times, and so, you know, under October, where it says, "Board members, review the resumes and applications," we, we never brought, I never brought the applications of prospective trustees to the whole board for our review.
I think in our, in the last couple of years, I think it was, we had more, the vacancies that arose were later. They weren't, we didn't know about them until, like, closer to December, right? They were ones that we thought people were continuing on, and they chose not, they decided not to. So that's probably, that's why the timeframe is not, it doesn't work with...
Timeframe doesn't seem to work.
It didn't work with what we've done in the last couple of years because of that. I think, I think if we knew that people were, terms were up and people were not going to continue, then we would have stuck with this timeframe, is what my, correct me if you think I'm wrong, but I believe that's what happened.
If you'd like, we can, and, under procedure, and again, we don't vote for procedure, but when we write procedure, we can say that the resumes and applications are due to the committee as opposed to the board? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. I think that, because if you are instilling within this committee the requirement and the trust that we will choose and review people's applications, then, you know, I mean, it's fine if you all want to sit there and review with us, but, but...
Okay.
That's why you have a search committee.
That's why you have a search committee, correct.
Right. So next to October, when it says, "Resumes and applications due," I'm going to insert, as you're indicating, "To the search committee by the first Friday in October, resumes and applications distributed to committee members."
Correct. Well, as long as everybody agrees with that, I mean...
And then it's committee members, not board members.
Right, committee members.
Review the resumes for advisory discussion at October board meeting in executive session. And then the search team narrows the list and search team contacts. So I can make those changes if everybody is in agreement for procedure, but again, we don't vote for procedure. We'll have two separate documents in the end, one in the procedure section and one in the policy section.
I just want a clarification about that.
Yeah, and that's fine.
Because we have never really followed that protocol, per se, and, you know, the first Friday in October is early, if we knew ahead of time, as Jen said. But if we don't, then, you know, we kind of fly by the seat of our pants and get everybody in before January.
But Judy, are you, are you happy with the policy section? Because the policy section is what?
Correct. Yes. I think, you know, it is, it was just clarification of those words.
Yeah, no worries.
Any other additional comments on any of the policies here by anyone else?
Did you want to talk about the unattended child policy and the workplace violence policy statement, just to discuss a little bit? The unattended child policy, Justin and I did not change at all. I mean, it's the exact same one, word for word. It's working, it's fine. It's been in existence a while. This is the unattended child policy, last approved in 2020, originally approved in 2017. But we didn't see any reason to change anything.
It looks thoroughly, yeah.
Okay. And the last one?
Yeah, then the workplace violence policy statement. What we did was we added an addendum, essentially. What we had in here was we followed the policies of the town of Penfield without having the policies of the town of Penfield listed, and what we did was insert the policies of the town of Penfield, just, just so, like, they don't, clarification, they don't have to look somewhere else.
Right. Library staff members cannot easily access town policy, so it's important for us to have it easily accessible. So we put it right in the policy, and should, like, you know, like this one, we put on the schedule pretty infrequently, right? We have this every four years, but obviously, should the town change their policy, we would have to bring this earlier and change it, because we have to make sure that it adheres.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I think that looks really good. Any other questions or thoughts there from anyone else on the board?
So just kind of related to that, so do we have anywhere, like, a way of knowing which of our policies directly incorporate town policy, so that we would know, like, oh, the town updated their workplace violence policy, that means it's time for the library? Do we have some sort of?
There are very few policies like that. There are sections of the employee, the employee manual that are like that, which indicate it, and there's this policy. I don't think any of the others, I'd have to really look, but I think those are the two.
I think, I think if you know that, then even on this schedule right here, like, what to be updated, that's probably a nice thing to just star, just a little, like, one column that just says, okay, this star or something means that...
Coincides with...
Coincides with some kind of town policy. So just, you're so aware of it, but if we have a director that's not as aware, then, then what do we do?
We can do that. I mean, I think that's why it's called a statement, not a policy. We don't have a workplace violent policy for the library, per se, because we don't really have a policy. We follow town policy, and nothing else is called this, oh, the trustee ethics statement. I wonder if that comes from the town?
I don't know, but the policies, the town board has to adopt the new policies every time something happens. So I would imagine that a, you go to the staff meetings, the librarian goes to the staff meetings, the HR person talks about what they're doing, they will say if they're going to make a change to the policy. So that would be the flow of information you would hear about it.
I will add another column, though.
I will add another column, though. I think that's a fantastic idea.
Perfect. Good catch, Megan.
Actually, just asking, I'd like to ask a quick question about that. Are there other sources that we might pull from, NILA, ALA, anything like that?
And we do, absolutely.
If for some reason, it might be helpful to go beyond just simply saying this pulls from town policy, and maybe have some way of indicating just external sources that are influencing this policy. And you could have, I don't know, one, two, three, whatever it is, however many external sources we identify as influencing town library policy.
And do you want that on the bottom of the schedule, an explanation of how we write policy?
That's a great idea, because let's say if there's, like, exactly influencing. So where should we go for reference, you know? Like, it gives a little bit more meat.
Again, it just creates a document that, again, if we don't have a director who's on top of it, or the board is unaware, which I'm unaware, easily pass it off to, you know, to future people.
I would absolutely do that, sure.
Great. Thank you so much, Rhonda. With that, I think we wrapped up that section. Judy, communications, any additional information we need to be aware of?
Nothing to add.
Okay. Rhonda, we're off to the director's report.
Yeah, thank you. So Jason came to our ribbon cutting. Wasn't it nice?
It was.
It was so nice. I put a picture in here. It was just lovely. So that, those are the remaining members of the Friday Club in your report. And that's the picture of them, you know, beside the Little Free Library. And it was just so nice. It was just, I don't know. It was, you know, you put in local history and people who are really strong advocates of the library, and you put in a, it was raining until the time of the ribbon cutting. It literally stopped raining five minutes before the time. People sat around for about 40 minutes. When they got up to go, it literally started raining again. It was, like, the skies were in favor of this event, and it was just really nice.
And two of them spoke.
Yes, yes. Two of them spoke.
Two of them did speak.
It was great just to see them and their experience. They could tell when they first started, when the library was brand new. They were like, oh, and I went down and did this. And then they talked about what they did. And then they're like, oh, and now we're 100 years old. Oh, my gosh. Some time has passed, and the library has evolved with them. So it was really good to see.
The Little Free Library, actually, is really popular. We fill it probably four times a week.
Wow.
Yeah. It's really going very well. And it's a good way for us to get rid of our discards, you know, because it puts them to good use, and it, giving it back to the taxpayers. So how nice is that?
And anybody else?
Yes, people are putting things in the Little Free, but I will be honest, you know, we were having the book sale, and if I saw a really nice, well-kept book that I thought would sell, I pulled it out and gave it to the sale. But yeah, people are putting things in it all the time. It's going fine. So the Marie Benedict lecture, which, you know, 300 people came to it, but then we had that opportunity to put it on the PCTV YouTube. And I'm so grateful to the town staff members who facilitated that. So another 300. So all, no, we had 600 people, which is insane for one event. It's just.
And it was only on YouTube for a week, wasn't it?
We had the rights for one week.
Yeah.
And that's how many checked in.
318 people.
Yeah. So again, Summer Brook, that grant really, you know, went far, because in addition to this program, we had the Lindisso Park event with over, like, 100 and some 30, 140 kids. So great, great program. We're still looking for a chair. I told you what's going on in the Bremen Room, so things are happening, lots of meetings.
Now, let's get down to the real question. What color are you painting it?
I can pass around my phone and show you. It's a very.
I think it's matching my tie.
It's gray. We're going with gray tones. So the, it's a light gray on the wall, a lighter gray on the trim, and like, a kind of like, a grayish green in the kitchen. So far, everybody who's seen the colors has said they liked it. I hope they're telling the truth.
I saw it.
But we had a lot of people on, in this decision. We, every time anybody came to ask us what color, whatever, I brought in as many staff members as I could into the room. And I said, everybody, you know, give your opinion. We want to hear as many opinions as possible. And basically, people agreed in the end that we just wanted a fresh, clean, modern look, which is what we're going for. So yeah, it's going really well. But backtracking just a little bit, we did have a full staff training on material challenges. You know, I created this PowerPoint, and I included, like, I embedded a video. I just want staff to really be aware that this is a, this is probably going to happen. It is happening at every other library in the area. People are challenging materials in public libraries. It is just prevalent right now. So I want our staff to be comfortable with the idea, actually embracing the idea, because we have to be as customer service friendly as possible, and we have to be as understanding and empathetic to the needs of these, of anybody who challenges a book, or a movie, or a program, or even something on the bulletin board, because we have to be inclusive. So when you're inclusive, that means you're inclusive of all, even those who don't like what you're purchasing. Sometimes when you listen really carefully, and you, you're an active listener, sometimes things go in your favor. So we had, I asked everybody to come in. Everybody did come in, and we sat there for quite some time talking about it, and a lot of people had concerns. And I think it really helped. So I know a lot of you have gone for training for this as well, and I think it's really important for the board to be aware that this is something that might happen. And we all have to be aware that we need to know how to react. And if it comes to the staff, and then it goes to me, and then we decide we want to keep the book, or the movie, or whatever, it's going to come to you all. So we all need to be prepared.
Is it just challenging material, or like, the location of materials that?
Sometimes it's location.
Okay.
Yeah. And we have this, we're partnering with a new volunteer organization to provide basic computer assistance. They're going to come now. I think, it started once a week. It's going to probably be twice a week for those patrons who need extra time, and the reference librarian just can't sit for an hour or so. These volunteers are going to come and sit with them and answer their questions at designated time. So that's going to start in October. We're super excited about that. And that's it.
Are they only dealing with computer issues that people have?
Yeah, this organization does do other things, but we ask just for computers.
So.
eBooks. They could help with eBooks.
eBooks, phones, whatever, whatever.
Yeah. And obviously, every volunteer comes with his or her own.
iPad, whatever.
Knowledge.
Yes.
You know.
So it's not just working on using the library computers. It's their own.
It could be whatever. So we'll see how that goes. But yeah, we're really excited about that. So.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with Literacy Rochester, and yes, their digital literacy program, at least as I've been familiar with it. If somebody had, like, a smartphone that they brought in, they can help kind of talk them through that. They can help them with setting up, I mean, we all know you need an email address to do pretty much anything these days. So I've known volunteers who can help people navigate, here's how you set up a Gmail account, things like that. So I was really excited to see that.
Oh, good. I'm glad.
In the report. That's a, they're a fantastic organization.
Yeah, that's, Peggy O'Neill has been the catalyst for that.
Peggy's awesome.
Is that through a grant, or just?
Free. It's free. She found out about it, I think, through, Stephanie Blando had the idea originally, but they worked on it. And Peggy's taken it, you know, and gone forward and secured this extra help.
Does anyone have any additional questions or comments about Rhonda's director's report?
How is the Library of Things going? You added?
Oh, my gosh, it's amazing. We're kind of loving it. Yeah. So I don't know if you've seen it on social media, but every time I've checked, between 40 and 50% of the materials are out at any time. The hotspots, we rarely see a hotspot. It's like, very strange when you see one on a shelf. They just go out as soon as they come in. It's been really popular. And we did set up a table, a puzzle table, a community puzzle table, since now we have puzzles. So we have seen people sitting there and doing the puzzle, which is kind of cool.
Any, with like, the hotspots or anything, any, is it mostly people within the town checking them out, or are we seeing people from outside?
We don't, we don't check that data. You, we don't send it through delivery. They have to come to the library to get it. So, but anybody in the system can see that we have it and come and get it.
Just kind of curious.
I have a question, only because someone, a couple of people have asked me. We have a book discussion group during the day. Is there any plans for a book discussion group in the evening?
We have tried it, like, three times in my one year here. I'm here, I'm here a year and a half, and we've never had anybody sign up. We have tried it, but we will continue to try it. So do you have ideas, suggestions?
Well, somebody mentioned a men's book club, you know, I don't, guys like to write.
We wouldn't do a gender.
You won't do a gender?
No.
Okay.
I was one of the ones that went to Judy about that. I do work full-time.
Well, you were the only one, though. I had some vehicles.
But we had talked about maybe doing every other month, so one month at night and the next during the day. But I mean, if there's, if everybody's happy with where it is, and you get the most people there, that's okay, too.
You know, it is, it is not easy to start a book club, because, you know, the first time you have it, nobody even realizes. The second time you have it, maybe two people realize, and no, people want to come with just two people.
Affirm that I had no idea that for the past year and a half, you have been trying.
It just takes time to build, and it's, it can be disappointing for the staff member who's facilitating, who's preparing, preparing, preparing. And then three times in a row, what has happened is that person has come into my office and said, nobody's coming. But we can keep trying, you know? I mean, definitely, if you have people who are interested, we can actually have a patron-driven book club where, you know, the patrons facilitate, you know, and we can get it going that way. I mean, there's so many ways to do this. I've had, in some libraries, book clubs outside the library, like in a local bar or a restaurant, you know, and they can be very successful. So we can certainly keep trying. If that's what you're hearing from the community, we will.
Well, you know, just, can there be a nonfiction book club? Does it always have to be fiction?
It doesn't. Is that what you're thinking we need?
Well, that's not me, but.
Right.
Somebody else asked me about a thriller book club, you know, can we, and then it is. You're not talking about a gender so, so much. So, but, I don't know, you know, they, it was just like, three people.
No, three people is a lot. Three people is enough to get going. So, yeah, I'll bring it to the next librarian meeting.
We'll see if those three people sign up, though.
Well, they probably won't the first month. They might not the second month.
I'll sign up.
People are really busy in the evening, I will say, especially since the pandemic. It's really hard to get people to sign up for a series. They're good at signing up for a one-off, but a series is tough. But we can certainly try again.
Perfect. With that, we'll move on to unfinished business. Doesn't appear to be any there. We'll go on to new business. Rhonda, looks like the fee schedule review.
Great. So I just wanted to discuss the fees that we have in place to see if there is some room for change. So the first part of the fee table, you'll see what each of our neighboring libraries charge for a black and white copy, a color copy, and a lost item processing fee. Currently, we charge 15 cents for a black and white, but more people charge 20. One even charges 25, or two even charge 25. The average comes out to 18 cents. It does, it does not cost us 15 cents for a black and white copy. But this is our most popular service. And we have, we have lost revenue from children's MYA material fines. And we will be talking in a few months about what to do with adult fines, maybe eliminating, maybe cutting, maybe leaving, I don't know. But we just went through the budget process, and we know that as our revenue goes down, the town really can't afford to fill those shoes. It's got to come from someplace. And when it comes from, when it come, when it has to come from someplace, it comes from our unallocated fund balance, our savings. So we have to be somewhat more aggressive sometimes. And I suggest that we increase our 15-cent black and white copy to 20 cents, and that would result, it's not a lot of money, but a little extra money by the end of the year. The color copy, we charge a dollar, and I'm guessing, I haven't been here that long, but I am guessing that's the original price that came in maybe 15 years ago, when we all got color copiers, and everybody was so afraid of the cost involved. It doesn't cost that much anymore. And you can see the numbers, how few people make a color copy. And I think we can lower that dollar to 50 cents. It's a fairer price. We have a lot of students coming in, doing their reports and such. Fewer people than even a few years ago keep copiers at home. It's just not worth it. So they come to the library for this, and they're all doing black and white, because they don't want to pay the dollar. So I would suggest, in that case, decreasing it to 50 cents, being more in line with the other libraries. And then the last item on this chart is the lost item processing fee. And you'll see that Bearport does not charge this fee, Grease, Hamlin, Henrietta, no fee, Palmer, Pittsford, Scottsville, Webster, a lot of our neighboring libraries don't charge this fee. So the lost item processing fee was put in place many, many years ago by MCLS libraries. Basically, if somebody loses a book, and the book costs maybe $19.95, the library would slap on another $5, saying that staff had to go and buy the book, and then process the book, and then, you know, get it ready for circulation. The truth is, our staff is there. Is it costing us $5? Well, I don't really know. And to me, it's punitive to add another $5 when they already are coming to us and saying, honestly, I lost the book. Can I pay for the book? So I would love to get rid of that fine, that fee. So basically, I just want to kind of balance it. I think the color is just too much, and so people aren't using it. I think the processing fee is punitive, and I don't think it's good customer service to slap on another $5 when people already feel bad about the cost. But the black and white, I think we have some rooms, and so many other local libraries charge 20 cents. Maybe that's where we can kind of recruit some of that revenue. Thoughts?
I agree with it.
Me, too.
All three.
And I do think it's an interesting point, that lowering the color printing to 50 cents might ultimately see people use it more. So it may not even really be a loss ultimately, if people are actually making color copies more.
I also like the idea that it is aligning more with our neighboring libraries, because people do like to, you know, they, they see it as, a lot of people see it as MCLS and not individual libraries. And so that, when, when something, a fee or something is higher at one library, then it's almost, it's a surprise. And that makes, you know, and you don't want to have, to shock people with something like that either, you know? Then they become disenchanted with the library. We don't want that.
So it sounds like we're all in agreement to raise the black and white to 25 cents, the color to?
20.
20 cents.
20 cents. The color to, reducing it down to 50, then removing the lost item processing fee. Do I have a motion to accept that?
Can we make the motion effective November 1st, to give us time to get ready?
Perfect.
Okay.
Have a motion to approve that? Neeraj, Megan, you second. All in favor?
That's, that's awesome. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I know sometimes raising fees sounds odd, you know? Not, not really what we're trying to do. But I think in this case, it's a balance. I really appreciate you listening. Thank you.
And I mean, it's five cents. I doubt people are even going to really pay that much attention to us.
Be aware that it went out by five cents.
You find a nickel on the ground.
No worries. With that, we'll go on to the claims payment. Who was the auditor?
Me.
Awesome. Jennifer?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the payment of claims worth $23,265.63.
Megan, Judy second. All in favor? And then with that, it looks like a reissueer for October. November will be Justin, and then December will be Jason.
So I win.
And then Anna, you would be January there.
Very close.
With that, do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting? Neeraj, anyone second? Jennifer, all in favor? Perfect. We'll adjourn this meeting.
Jason, we actually have 100% attendance. Should we take a picture, maybe?
Yeah, we can, to update the.
The website, yeah.
But we can, the motion. But we can, the motion, the meeting's adjourned.
Yep.
Let's do it.
We don't need to make a motion to take a picture?
No.